I will call to order, welcome everyone to the October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting of the Farmington Zoning Board of Appeals. This meeting being held remotely. And would the secretary please read the agenda into the record, please, or the notice, rather?
Notice is hereby given that the zoning board of appeals will hold an online public hearing on Monday, October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two at seven o'clock P M on the following application. Henry and Linda Mason, application for variance to reduce side yard setback from forty feet to thirty-two feet. For addition to house and to reduce side yard setback from forty feet to twelve feet for location of in-ground pool located at sixty-seven Reservoir Road, R eighty zone. Nicole D. Tomaso, application for variance to reduce rear yard setback from twenty-five feet to seventeen feet. For addition to house located at three Harvest Lane, R twenty zone. Interested parties are encouraged to participate in this online public hearing. The link to this meeting may be found on the town of Farmington's website at W W W dot Farmington dash C T dot org backslash about dash Farmington backslash calendar dash meetings. A copy of this proposal is available online at W W W dot Farmington dash C T dot org backslash government backslash zoning hyphen board hyphen of hyphen appeals. Or by calling the planning department at Farmington Town Hall at eight six zero six seven five two three two five dated at Farmington, Connecticut, September twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two.
Is there someone present representing the applicant?
Yes.
This is Skip Mason. I wanted Marcus Puckett to represent us. See, he's a.
Yeah, I see that. Hang on one second.
If you could give him.
Oh, there we go.
So again, who's going to speak in favor of the applicant?
There we go. I was just promoting to a panelist. That's not you.
Good evening. Eric Video. Good evening, Marcus Puckett. For the record, I'm an engineer at Godfrey Hoffman Hodge with an address at twenty-six Broadway in North Haven. And I'm here to represent the applicant.
Go ahead, please.
Okay, the applicant is proposing some addition, some to their existing home as well as a swimming pool. On an existing lot which is undersized, the this lot is in an R eighty zone. And has a total square footage of fifty-six thousand and a bit square feet. This this lot was created prior to the current zoning setbacks and and prior to the ridgeline setback. The reason that the applicant requires a variance for this application to be for this construction to continue is because of septic system in the front yard as well as the septic tank and the reserve system. Area being used up. And then the ridge line to the rear and the ridge line setback. The only remaining location, yeah. For the pool is is in the side yard. The the neighbors to the south, their their home is eighty-six feet away from the property line, so would be in ninety-some feet from the pool. If approved and eighty, ninety, a hundred and twenty-some feet from the proposed addition along the south side of the building. The additions to the buildings, there are two additions on the proposed house and then one to the garage. They are hatched in light gray on 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 the screen. Adjacent to the to the two larger blocks on the buildings. So yeah, we're just pointing at them there. Um, that's that's the whole proposal in a nutshell. I'd be happy to answer any questions or if you needed any additional information, I would venture to provide it.
Garrett, if we could, please, this would be an opportunity for the commissioners to ask questions. If you would go in our usual order, please.
Yes, I just wanted to say one thing for the record, Chairman Galhan. So we've looked at the application after the legal notice had been published. And this area is a covered porch. Covered porches are exempt from the yard setback for the zoning regulations. So it's just the pool that you're looking at for the variance. The the covered porch is exempt. It's just the the pool and patio area that you're looking at for the variance. So just as a point of clarification.
Okay, and the patio area in the pool would be toward the south of the property.
To the west of the property. Yes, the to the lower. So here's the existing house. Here is the existing garage. They're proposing a attached front porch here as just to get give everyone idea of what's being shown. So they're proposing a covered porch here. In addition to the home here, in addition to the garage here, and the pool and patio is right here.
Okay, so basically, all the other additions to the house and the garage are all, none of them require a variance.
Correct. They they do require going to planning and zoning for ridgeline for the ridgeline regulation, but it's you're just looking at the pool for the variance.
And the pool essentially is in the front yard.
It's in the side yard. So Reservoir Road is right here.
Okay.
So the driveway comes up this way. Here's the septic tank that was called out. Here's the septic field. And then this line right here is the ridgeline.
Okay, thank you. And I went totally out of order and started answering, asking questions. So let's let's go in order, please.
All right. Commissioner Marsh, any questions?
Not at this time.
All right, Commissioner Healy?
No comment at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Walsh?
No questions at this time.
Commissioner Adim?
Hi, thank you. Is the hardship you're claiming simply that this lot is undersized in comparison to other lots or that due to the septic tank location and ridgeline issues? That this is the only place that you could put the pool?
All of the above, really. It they all combined because the lot is smaller than the the current zoning requires, the setbacks are larger than they were when the house was constructed. The the ridgeline has been added since the house was constructed. It has a septic in the front and the septic reserve area in the front. So there really is no other place inside the setbacks to put a pool. You know, obviously, if we put it on the other side of the house, we'd have to take out part of the driveway, and that also would be would still be somewhat in within the setbacks or too close to the septic system. So the hardship is there isn't anywhere else. Yeah.
Yes, so just to clarify, Mr. Puckett's information. So as he said, the lot is about fifty-six thousand square feet. The minimum for this zone is eighty thousand square feet. The minimum lot width for this zone is two hundred feet, and this lot is only a hundred and fifty feet wide. So it's about fifty feet narrower than would normally be required in the zone today.
And that is a pre-zoning circumstance or pre-current zoning regulation circumstance, correct?
Correct.
Sorry, I did it again.
Yeah. Don't we keep going? Or, Mr. Adim, do you have any more questions?
No, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Llewellyn?
No questions.
Commissioner Cloud?
I should have the neighbors waiting. By getting ahead of myself in this question.
You're getting ahead of yourself. We'll do that after everyone's questions.
Okay.
Mr. Schoenhorn?
What is the size of the pool and what's the size of the decking around the pool that you want to install here? Hard to see with this image here if the size is indicated.
The 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 pool is twelve by twenty-four, and the deck extends two feet around the three of the sides and I believe it was the twelve feet on the end. Well, yeah, it's twelve feet on the end.
And is and I drove by there on the weekend. Is there currently an above-ground pool in the approximate area where you want to put this pool? Is that this is an in-ground pool? So.
This is, yes, this is an in-ground pool and there is no pool to my knowledge. No. The last time I was there, there was not.
So there wasn't some kind of blue raised, I don't know, something that looked like a pool from the road? I didn't go on the property.
This property or there's no pool there?
There's a wood pile here, Commissioner Schoenhorn. Could that, I don't remember.
Blue, but there is a wood pile.
Give me one second. I'll see if it's in the photos. No, I do not have the photo of the wood pile.
Okay, and can you tell me if you go back to the the site plan, please? Yeah, it says, I'm curious, it says there's a proposed garage addition. Is that proposed garage addition going right close up to the the ridgeline? Is that my understanding based on that dotted line, the hyphenated line I see there?
Yes, but that would be part of the TPZ application for the ridgeline protection zone.
When we if we consider this in terms of the hardship, do we also have to consider this in toto? In other words, is each of these proposals not counting the the covered porch? A separate application to planning zoning or is it basically going in as a all all-encompassing one application for three separate constructions, a proposed addition? A proposed garage addition and a swimming pool with a concrete patio?
Correct. It would all be one application for as all additions to the home. It it'll be considered as separate items, at least for so the garage addition is a separate special permit with town planning and zoning. But it would but that would be considered as part of the app. That would be one motion that town planning and zoning would vote on. And then they would add an additional motion for the ridgeline area to approve the garage addition, the home addition, and the pool.
And then I see that the utility shed is to the west of the the west of the pool area itself. Is that can be an enclosed shed with what, like a pump at pump house and everything?
Yes, it's intended just to have the just the the utilities of the pool itself and and in a small changing room with no plumbing.
A changing room. So you're talking about it being sort of a pertinent area, you one could call it like a like like an enclosed porch or something as well, right?
Sure.
Electricity, right? It's going to have electricity, lights.
Well, it'll have electricity, you know, certainly for the for the pump, for the pool pumps and things like that. And I would assume there'd be a light on it within it somewhere, yes.
Right. And and could you just explain to me, I'm not sure I understand, when it comes to hardship, would you just indicate where there were other locations that were considered for the pool that would not require a variance?
So the essentially the driveway and and directly north of the house between the house and the driveway would be the only area and neither are large enough and both would put the pool closer to the septic system and the and this septic tank.
Well, closer, would it require it? Is it would it be so close that it would not be permitted? Or is it you just don't want to put in the same area?
It it I believe that would be down slope. So it would be fifty feet down slope of the tank. So I I believe they would have a hardship there of putting it within fifty feet down slope of the septic tank.
Commissioner Schoenhorn, just real quick for clarification. So the regulation for location of pools is
Behind the
behind the longest rear wall or the midpoint of the property. I think the midpoint of the property is one six, one ninety-two, where the front of the pool is at one sixty-five. So I think about there might be the midpoint of the property or the longest rear wall, which would be about here technically. So it's not allowed to be located in this area of the property. As we stated, this is where the ledge is. And then this is where the existing driveway is connecting up to the garage and the house. And there there's a turnaround up here as well. Because it's a single car driveway down to Reservoir Road.
If I recall correctly, the house is set higher than Reservoir Road. So the driveway is it it there's an incline. Am I correct about that?
Correct. If you give me one second, I can dive a picture from the road. So here's the driveway going up. Here's the the I guess I think technically the way the house is oriented, this is the side of the house, but this is the front of the house facing Reservoir Road. The pool will be in this area. Just for some reference points. Here is the cedar tree and here are the bushes. And if we go here, here's the cedar tree and here are the bushes.
Is because you're up on the trap ridge, is any blasting going to be required in order to create the hole for this in-ground pool?
I I do not believe it. It's not a very deep pool, so we do not believe we will require any blasting. There there may be, they may need to, you know, hammer it out a little bit, but there there should not be any blasting. It's not it it's it's only a four to five foot deep pool.
Oh, four to five foot deep. Okay.
Yeah.
And was any consideration given to a smaller footprint for the pool and patio?
I I would say no, there was not.
All right, thank you. I don't have any more questions.
All right. And Chairman Galhan?
I don't have any questions other than those that have been asked and that I've asked out of order. Thank you. All right, is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the applicant?
I do not see any raised hands for in favor.
All right, then. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the applicant? I note there there is an opposition letter referenced in the agenda review. I confess that before this hearing, I tried to pull that out and could not locate it quite in time.
That's fine. I would actually request, since it was submitted as part of the record, we'll just have Commissioner Schoenhorn read the record.
That's what I was going to ask.
Pull up right here, John. Sorry, let me.
All right, so it's dated October twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two. It's from the, if you could just pull down the bottom and see the name, please. Thomas D. Mason, the third, and Sonia J. Mason. Addressed to the zoning board of appeals at One Monty Drive in Farmington. This letter is to voice our opposition on the zoning variance application of Henry and Linda Mason of sixty-seven Reservoir Road, R eighty zone. We reside at seventy-one Reservoir Road, and these variances, house addition and in-ground pool are too close to our property line. There appear to be at least two other spots on the property for a covered porch and in-ground pool that would not affect the side yard setback zoning regulations. Due to the contour of the land, the proposed addition in pool is a concern because it would be at the same level as our bedroom windows. The associated noise that comes with a pool is also of concern. In the future, when we go to sell our house, this zoning change would devalue our property. We trust that the board would not grant this variance. However, if you do, we respectfully request that a buffer be required. Please enter this letter into the record for the meeting on October, on Monday, October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two. We plan to attend the meeting via Zoom. So if you have additional questions, please feel free to ask at that time or call us at eight six zero six seven seven six seven five seven prior to the meeting. Sincerely, Thomas D. Mason, the third, and Sonia J. Mason.
Are either Ms. or Mr. Mason in attendance this evening?
They are, hang on.
Is there anything that either of you would like to say for the record? In addition to the statements and information contained in the letter that was just read into the record?
The only other thing is can you hear me?
Yes, that's Tom, Thomas Mason speaking, correct?
Yes, correct. The only other concern is we don't use air conditioning in the summer either. So our windows tend to be open. So the noise is kind of a big issue for us. And it just seems like on the other side of the house between the driveway in the house, they could possibly fit a pool in there, probably need a variance also, but it wouldn't encroach on anybody's property. And that's, I think, yeah.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for the parties, a party speaking in opposition?
Commissioner Schoenhorn?
Commissioner Schoenhorn, go ahead.
Yes, this is to Thomas Mason. Could I, or maybe it's to Garrett, can I see on the map where the Thomas and Sonia Mason property is in relation to the applicant's property?
Try here. Let me check. It's, I don't know if this, oh, this one shows it. Okay. So here's their correcting, this is the house and this is a barn or garage.
Yes.
And then so here, that's their house. And then this is the applicant's house and pool.
And where is the driveway for the Thomas Mason property?
It's further south, west, I'm sorry. Gil, give me one moment to pull up the J S. That'll be a probably a little easier to see for everyone.
Like if we added one, like it's just, I don't know, just.
Well, while we're waiting for that, if I could ask Mr. Thomas Mason, oh, this will be easier to look at. Yes, all right.
So here is the applicant's driveway. Here's their existing garage. Here's the existing house. Here is the neighbor's driveway, the barn, that house. And their driveway is right here.
Right. And Mr. Thomas Mason, is your, I can't tell from this image, but is your house down slope downhill from the applicant's property?
Yes, it's about fifteen or twenty feet below where the pool would be. There's a steep bank, yeah.
Like that.
That shows you that the power.
Here's the house. This is, this contour is four twenty-five. This house running through, this contour running through the house is four twenty. So.
That's a ground level though, right?
Correct, correct. Yeah, this is based on the ground level.
All right, in the side of the house, which I guess faces east, Mr. Thomas Mason. Now, what is on that side of your house that faces the applicant's property?
The shed.
Oh, it's a little wood shed.
And what I mean from the windows of the, what rooms of your house face them? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
There's two bedrooms and then where the number seventy-one is, is another bedroom window. You see numbers, yeah. Yeah, there's two windows facing the pool in that bedroom, actually three windows. And then in the other two bedrooms at the as you're looking at the picture to the right side, near the sidewalk, there's a each bedroom has a window that faces right where they're going to put the pool, or propose to put the pool.
And what kind of foliage or plantings are there on the property line? It's hard to tell from this.
It's just kind of wild scrub, some trees deciduous. Most of the evergreens have died off, but there's a few, but they're tall.
Right, thank you.
Okay.
Are there any, does any other commissioner wish to ask questions of the party opposing the application?
One.
Mr. Marsh, are you?
To the Masons, do you have swimming pool?
Yes.
Yeah.
Down over here?
Yes.
You all set? Commissioner Marsh, are you concluding with your questions?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else wish to ask questions of the party opposing the application? Are there any further parties who wish to speak in opposition to the application? Hearing none.
Commissioner, Chairman Galhan, just before we close public hearing, just so everything. So I did share the the letter with the applicant and I did speak to him on the phone today. Generally with pools, there's a requirement that you need to have it fenced in with a four-foot fence. He's not opposed to putting a fence or vegetation along the property line. It would just be, it would just if the the board elects to approve the variance, it would just be a condition of approval that you require vegetation or fencing screening.
Yeah, I noticed that in the opposition letter as well.
Are you going to be able to access the backyard?
Yeah, yeah.
What was that? Chairman Galhan?
No, I believe it was Mrs. Mason that was speaking. Did you wish to be heard further, man? Okay.
So if you discuss with the applicant or their engineer about what you would, would they be opposed to having vegetation and?
That I was going to ask, ask that and given the applicant's representative, given the statements that we have received from the parties in opposition, what is your response, including your response regarding the applicant's willingness to put a fence and or vegetation as a buffer between their property and that of Mr. and Mrs. Mason?
Marcus Puckett, again, for the record. I I guess I would say as far as the applicant's willingness, they're here and and they could offer that that response themselves. I would just remind the commission that the 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 neighbor's house, Thomas and Sonia's house is eighty-six feet away from the property line, which taking that the setbacks in this area are forty feet. You know, their setback and our setback would would be also eighty feet. So this wouldn't be an uncommon distance for a pool to be from a the neighbor's house. And all of these lots are currently developed. And then I would I would ask that you ask the Henry and Linda, if they're willing to agree to a fence or vegetation as a buffer.
Definitely would add that to the plan.
May we identify him speaking, please?
It's Henry Mason, applicant.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, your comment was, sir?
That we would be willing to add the fence.
And Mr. Puckett, based on this plan, is there, can you provide us with, or is there an understanding of what height buffer or fencing would be necessary in order to assuage the opposing party's concerns about the pool being level with their bedroom windows?
There, I guess I I I'm not sure. I I would say, you know, I typically I guess I, I, I'm not sure, I, I would say, you know, I typically, we, we wouldn't want a fence too much taller than six foot. We certainly could, you know, um. Do a staggered row of arbor viti or something that's, that, that is densely vegetated, that grows taller to. Um, to provide a buffer. Um, I also would say that the, the proposed utility shed, um. In, in so much as it's a, is a structure. Uh, of some size and height. Will, will provide some buffer between the pool. And, and pool occupants to the neighbor's house.
Okay.
And. Chairman Callahan, just before we go any further again, um, just. Whoever makes. A motion, um. I'll just say the usual recommendation is to make the motion in the affirmative for logical issues, um. That you specify where the fence should be and. Staff's recommendation would be from the top of the slope here, where, cause I think this hashing is greater than fifteen percent. Slope. Um, which would be pretty difficult to at least the front corner of the house would probably be reasonable, that's. Uh, I, I obviously can't have it. If the, if the commission just said a fence along the property line, that could be three hundred and eighty feet, um. Just, just to clarify, so, just so if whoever. Makes the motion. To, if they make a motion to approve with the condition of, of. Screening that it be from the, the top of the slope to the front corner of the house.
Which would be a total of approximately what? Top of the slope.
I, I might be able to measure that, if you give me a moment.
Maybe, maybe sixty feet?
That's not an unreasonable guess.
I'm going based on the distance of the. Well radius.
All right. Well, at this point. I believe we've heard fully from the applicant and from the parties in opposition, uh, do we have a motion, please?
I would just, uh.
There's a hand out, Mr. Callahan.
Yeah, I just asked for any last comments from the public before closing.
Oh, okay, I didn't see the hand come up.
Yeah.
Uh, whoever raised their hand.
On and Sonya should be able to speak.
Um, you can talk, do you wanna talk about the stuff?
Um, yeah, I'm just thinking about, you're talking about blasting and hammer drilling and. I'm not. Really happy about the whole thing, I, I really think the pool. Should be located somewhere else, just so it's, because the elevation. It's just. Uh, it's just not gonna be a good thing for us. Don't think it's gonna benefit our resale value. Having a pool right up that high on the. You know, overlooking, looking into our windows. And. So it's kind of, it's gonna create a hardship for us also. And I, I really think it could. Be put somewhere else on the property, which you'd probably need a variance for that also, but. I think it could be done.
Would be, and they, like, the elevation coming down, it's just. It's not a good spot, it from, for our perspective. It's the elevation and the. It's just bad.
Understood, based on those comments, anything further from the applicant?
No, that's.
Oh, they're asking for.
Oh, okay, sorry.
No, I understood, um. Mr. and Ms. Mason, that you were, you're, you're, didn't have any further comments, so I asked for any response from the applicant. Have you said all that you'd like to say this evening?
Is that addressed?
I'm asking Tom and Sonia.
Okay, sorry.
Tom, there you go.
Have you had an opportunity to provide us with all the information and all the statements that you wished to?
Um, are we all set?
Yes, you don't need to say any more, I just wanna make sure you're, you're about to say everything you wanted to.
Other.
Yeah, you can talk, go ahead.
One concern also is that. Uh, we've gotten. Three different. Measurements on how far it is from the, the property line. And I don't know if they're gonna stick with it, or if that's just gonna keep changing, because in the letter we got, first letter we got. It was eight feet, and then another one said ten feet, and then another one said twelve feet, so. It just keeps moving around those. Numbers. So not. Real confident that it's gonna be where they say it's gonna be.
Understood.
Okay.
So the.
You know, and, and the, like, one more, just one more thing, um. When. You know, the, that, I don't know his name, Puddick. He's talking about how. You know, there's eighty-something feet. But, like, if we were to decide in the future, or our children, um, you know, to add on. Really, one of the only places we could add on would be that side of the house, so you're talking about eighty feet, but if. If we were to add something on, you're gonna be even closer to the pool. And I don't know anything about runoff and stuff, but that hill is, is huge, if there's any runoff from that pool, it's coming right into our house.
Understood.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Having heard fully from the opposition. Uh, Mr. Puddick, anything further?
Uh, I have nothing further to add at this time.
All right, I believe that we are ready for a motion. Mr. Dagel, Mr. Sean Horn.
Chairman Callahan, you just need to close the here, the public hearing first.
I understand that, we have.
Oh, sorry.
I just, does anybody, I, everybody's had questions, everybody's had an opportunity to speak. That will therefore close the public portion of the meeting, uh, may we have a motion from a member of the commission?
So, so that we're not here all evening, I will, so that we can discuss the matter, I will make the. Motion, I have not decided whether I would, how I'll vote, but I'll just state. That I make the motion for, uh, to approve the application of Henry and Linda Mason for variance. To reduce side yard setback. Um, from. From forty feet to, it says twelve feet, but I think it's ten feet.
I think ten, ten is the corner of the utility shed, which, which, uh. Per the zoning.
Application says twelve feet, though, so.
Right, that's the corner, so the corner of the pool is twelve feet. The shed is shown at ten feet, however, per the zoning regulations, sheds only have to be five feet off the property line.
Oh, okay. So, um, so, uh, side yard setback from, I'll read it again. I move that the application of Henry and Linda Mason for variance to reduce the side yard setback. Um, from forty feet to twelve feet for a location of in-ground pool. Uh, located at sixty-seven Reservoir Road in an R eighty zone, provided that a, um. Both a, um. Opaque fence, stockade or otherwise be erected from the, um.
Top of slope?
Top of the slope over to the. What I would call the. I don't know, the line, the, the, the. The line that's marked as thirty-three point two. Thirty-two point two. Um, which is the corner of the, uh. The front, front of the property line.
With the front.
And with, with, uh, additional plantings of arbor viti or other type of evergreen plantings that will, um. Further. Obscure or block the, uh, view of the shed and the pool and patio area.
Thank you, do I have a second, please?
Second.
Discussion, may we go in order? Um. Again, Mr. Dagel.
Yes. Uh. Um. Exactly, Commissioner Walsh.
Uh, no questions.
Commissioner.
Any comments or discussions?
No comment, no.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Indim?
I don't have any additional comments, thank you.
Commissioner Lawell?
No comments.
Commissioner Cloud?
No comment.
Commissioner Sean Horn?
Uh, just a couple, um, I, I'm have, I'm. I'm having some difficulty with the idea that this is a hardship for a couple of reasons, number one. I'm concerned that the location, uh, is, uh, a substantial encroachment in terms of, um. Runoff in terms of a concrete. Uh, patio on a slope that will be higher than the neighbor's property. Um. That there would be other locations on the property where this would be appropriate and that, um, a. Swimming pool in and of itself. Does not necessarily pose a hardship requiring a variance, not building a pool. Uh, is an alternative to the hardship here, so, um. I also don't know how high this shed is, there was, I don't see anything in the record that. That I saw that indicates the height of the shed. So that's another, uh, issue that's of concern, since the neighbor's. Lot and house sits lower than the. Uh, location of the pool, I also think that the bedroom windows will be on the, uh, on the, uh. Particular elevation of the pool and they'll be looking at the. Pool area and the patio areas from their second floor window, so that's my issues of concern here.
Just a clarification for Commissioner Sean Horn, uh, again, the shed is not part of variance application that is conforming with the zoning regulations and the zoning.
But Garrett, I, I, with all due respect, this, I don't think you can comment now during the discussion period.
All right.
I'm just noting that the location of it, I realize it could be closer, but it's part of a. It's part of the swimming pool, uh, variance in terms of where it's located, where it's being shown, where they wanna put it. So, um, but I, I think that during the discussion period, only commissioners are, are supposed to be able to talk, so.
All right. Is that all, John?
Y'all set?
I'm done.
Okay.
And Chairman Callahan?
I struggle with the hardship issue, um. With regard to swimming pools generally as well, and that is so in this case. So with that con, uh, given that I'm last, with that comment, I believe that we are ready to go to a vote. Which I suggest we will do by roll call, please.
All right, Commissioner Walsh?
No.
Commissioner Indim?
Nay.
Christian Lawell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cloud?
Aye.
Mr. Sean Horn?
No.
And Chairman Callahan?
No.
Motion fails, variance denied.
The next item on this evening's agenda. Is the application of Nicole Di Tomaso's. For variance to reduce rear yard setback from twenty-five feet to seventeen feet. For addition to house located at Three Harvest Lane, R twenty zone.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the matter be tabled because of the, uh. Uh, absence of sufficient notice to the adjoining property owners. And that the matter be rescheduled for the November twenty twenty-two, uh, ZBDA meeting.
May I have a second of that motion, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Real, real quick, Mr. Sean Horn, did you say November fourteenth?
I, I didn't know what, I just said November twenty twenty-two, whatever date our regular scheduled meeting is.
Yeah, so the, just the motion has to state November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, at seven PM via Zoom as per.
Fair, fair enough, that, that makes sense to me, so I will amend my motion to specifically, uh, request November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two.
We had a second of that motion, or do we have a second of that motion as modified?
Yes, second, modified motion.
Thank you, uh, let's do a roll call vote, please.
All right, uh, Commissioner Walsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Indim?
Aye.
Mr. Lawell?
Aye.
Mr. Cloud?
Aye.
Mr. Sean Horn?
Aye.
Chairman Callahan?
Aye.
All right, the mo, uh, the item will be continued to the November fourteenth meeting.
May we have a motion with regard to the September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two ZBA meeting minutes, please?
A motion to approve these, uh, minutes from the September nineteenth, twenty twenty-two zoning board of appeals meeting.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion, oh, the motion passed, um. I believe that concludes this evening's agenda, correct?
Yes, Chairman Callahan, do you mind if I just say something real quick?
Go ahead.
So for your, uh, next meeting, November fourteenth, um, you will be handling an appeal of. The zoning enforcement officer, um, so we will review that prior to commencement of that public hearing. Uh, the procedures, I think the last one was for Pinnacle Road. Uh, but I don't remember the date that that occurred, so I don't think some members were part of, uh, that process the last.
We haven't had an appeal from a, uh, an order of the zoning enforcement officer that I recall in quite a long time.
Correct, yeah.
The Pinnacle Road one was the last one, it was a year or two ago, it had to do with fill, wood chip fill.
Yes, clearing and fill.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay, yes, I remember that one, that was up on the ridge line too, I think.
Yes, so, so you'll be dealing with that, we'll, we'll have, um, we do have another variance application already, so. For the process, we'll do the two variance applications first, and then we'll do the appeal of the CEO. Uh, so just. If everyone. Could be in attendance, it would be appreciated.
Right, and Mr. Dagel, could I just inquire, um. Could we get the information for the, uh, zoning enforcement appeal sooner than we usually get the?
Yes.
So that if we wanna do a site inspection, at least in the air, uh, drive-by, we can do that, and we have enough time to do that.
Yes, so I told the applicant, or the, the appellant. Uh. That they need to have their information into me by October twenty-fourth, which should be the normal deadline for ZBDA. Uh, I will also have my, I probably won't have my information done by the twenty-fourth, but I, it will be. To you ahead of the normal. Time period that we, that we do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just because it's more, it's more of a legal proceeding than a variance application. So, thank you.
Having concluded the agenda for this evening, may we have a, or may I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, please? It's an easy one, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all, any opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned, thank you, everyone.